We waited for you.
Thank you.
Can you call me in order?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, no. It's not that bad. Have you seen the bottom line?
No. This one's okay because...
No, I'm not gonna see it.
This one was specific. The other one's...
Actually, cancel this back. I know. I'm good with that.
The order again.
I didn't mean to mess up the order. I just had a question on it.
When the smoke starts going out the windows of the houses, it'll blow and go like something.
Hey, Michael. Do we have a... We had another bus break... We had a bus breakdown. There was a towing charge from a school.
Do we have a check...
You don't get one of these things, so... So it was...
Yeah, it was... Yeah, it was right at the market. Don't let the punch was here.
Okay.
Do you know what happened?
I don't.
Freightliner 2009. Does that tell you which one? Fleet number fifteen. I'm not sure what it is, so... Here, please, if you don't mind me asking. What am I going to do now? What do you want? Um, I don't know. Oh, yes, this is from you. From you. She just... No, I pulled the cover out because I didn't understand. What was it? I just wanted to make sure it's going to be somewhere on there. On what we're actually paying. Because I got those figures from Nathan's one.
We had buses that are not voted. Have the one that did so much.
Sure. The letter?
Um... C.
Yeah, we would have seen.
Get the little person out.
Anybody see what that back bay was?
You want to check, Steve? No, I didn't know. I thought you should have said something. I don't know, it's wrong of you. Now you said it after. You wanted to ask.
Nathan? Can you please tell me what the... Where the White Mountain Survey Engineering and Incorporated check came from?
What account line?
It's a accounts receivable line.
It's a what?
It's a accounts receivable line.
Okay.
It's not gonna be honest. As long as they're gonna come out of the trust. We've already taken it all out.
That's what I was... They came out of the parking lot trust?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was looking for.
Nathan, you don't even look at the back bank. Because the check amount doesn't match what the invoice says. The invoice says it's the monthly billing.
Is it the eleven thousand?
That's what the invoice says, but...
Total invoice is for all three districts. The two districts in the SAU.
Right, but this is the... What's listed as the actual check is far left. That's why I was... Sixteen oh one.
We saved this for the town. Yeah, that's for...
That's the monthly...
That's the monthly invoice for total for both districts and SAU.
So what is this?
Wakefield portion. This is already the small intention.
No?
No. This is, um... I think we're gonna get... We did... We've gone a portion of the town. This expense report, we should be covering those monthly invoices. And then we're gonna have tuition costs. General insurance and all. What happened when you said that? I know. It's all uncomfortable, that's right. Well, it's not. That's the problem. We should have been coming about. And I started with the bill of rights.
I was lost in all of them. Michael, who's TSA Consulting Group?
I'd have to look it up. Transportation Safety Authority. Do we have our process?
So I can get... Thanks for your authorization, why?
Is that your checks? It's payable?
Oh, totally, yeah. Well, not within security lines. Educational compliance, monitoring qualified or non-qualified.
It's retirement. TSA Consulting Group is an educational retirement. Later.
You don't know about them? You don't know the check?
It's a retirement aid. For their checks?
I don't know. Do you know anything?
Look into it, Frank.
Done with that stack, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
You done with that stack you just looked at?
Yes, I did.
And there comes the checks.
Elliot? I'm gonna have to take it again.
No.
We know?
Like that looks like for the best person.
Steve, can you give us... Give these back?
No.
Okay.
Is there any big money in the question?
No, we haven't. I'm just reading.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Which I'll go... Which I'll just have.
It's ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Post?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes of meeting ten fifteen, two thousand fifteen. Make a motion to approve the public minutes of ten fifteen, two thousand fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public meeting... Public minutes of ten twenty-one, two thousand fifteen. And non-public. Don't together? Make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of Wednesday, October twenty-first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of ten twenty-two, two thousand fifteen. Public and non-public. Oh, this was a Wakefield budget meeting, sorry guys. So it's twenty-second, two thousand fifteen. Do we need to approve these? Pull that session to it? Yes. Okay. Make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
Um, save...
This meeting where we had... We talked about the... The line for the trailer.
It's in one of these. I read it. All right. Let's... I don't know that we... This... Let me just say. Yes, this is the one we talked about, the length of the trailer. And it's in there as you guys asked.
It's on page two.
Page two.
Third paragraph, last line.
Was that the same line? Note the trail was fifteen out of that eighteen thirty-eight. What did the... What line did the other three hundred and thirty-eight dollars fifty-five cents come from? Do we ever figure out on that?
No. What's the question?
It's fifteen hundred dollars in the line. There's W's of dollars, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Question was asked, where did that money... What line did that money come out of?
Actually, only, um... Leave's one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight. It came out of that line because the other five hundred came from the insurance.
No. So that's figure is transposed. No, that's what Steve asked. That's what Steve asked. Steve asked for that to come out. But five hundred of that was deducted from the insurance. No. We have a second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public comment? Yes.
I have some questions about the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget that you're currently working on. One, is I want to know why the transition budget for our own SAU is in this budget when we haven't officially withdrawn? Had a withdrawal vote by the public? And number two, how can you legally take out your position... Your portion of the maintenance director from the SAU? Since we'll still be part of the SAU through June two thousand seventeen?
Mr. Jackson, would you address the transition period question?
Well, we're two reps over.
Oh, that's right.
On the committee.
What do you guys want to do it?
I think the transitional year, if the town votes in March of sixteen to withdraw from the SAU, that transitional year is... We've already withdrawn from the SAU. The complete withdrawal will be done following. So it's partial withdrawal, transition.
But still, my concern is, is that until you have the vote, shouldn't that transition budget be part of the warrant article stating that, you know, if you... You know, do the voters wish to withdraw from the SAU in point O? And if so, the transition year, which is in this for this, for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, will be blocked. So then separate. Because if it's embedded in your budget right now, let's say it doesn't pass, I would assume that if it stays there, that that forty-two thousand, whatever about, is going to be sent back to the town if it's not approved. But I would like it to be more clear to the public. And I don't understand why it can't be part of the SAU warrant article withdrawal.
You want to go?
Well, I don't know if each and every year we have to keep investing in a position if we don't find it necessary.
I think you flipped off. I don't think you answered your question.
She was asking about the transition budget.
Right, but if... If we... If the vote doesn't go through...
Oh, okay.
That doesn't mean that we still have to invest in the position.
Now you're confusing with the... My second question. My second question. We are part of the SAU and we're committed to our commitment to their budget through June two thousand seventeen. So why did you vote to take out for that two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the... Your portion for the building director?
Because we don't feel the position is warranted. And we're doing it now for the next budget cycle. We're not cutting the position right now, but we're looking forward and there's no legalities involved, I'm sure, to cut a position out of our budget.
But, you know, but somewhere along the way, that the decision was made that both communities would pay for that budget.
I understand.
We're still part of that budget for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. So where does that...
We're not committed. We can cut positions. We could cut any joint positions. And we don't feel it's warranted. So that therefore we cut the position.
So how did... How did... When... Have you discussed this with Milton at the SAU joint meeting?
No.
Because it is going to affect that position.
I'm sure it will. But we can cut the positions on our end. We're not contracted with the SAU to keep those positions in place. And we decided the position was not warranted.
And that's what I'm saying, that agreement had to make in the past school board.
Okay.
And that's something that needs to be... I would want it to be brought to them as a joint thing, that they know that you're doing that.
I'm sure they know that we're doing it. We share a superintendent, so I'm sure he's informed her Milton boy.
And it stands down that forty-two thousand pension budget is still going to be part of your two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget?
Yes, it is. No else? Any else for reports?
Just a... If we don't put it in the budget and the vote is vote for it, there'll be no money in the budget for the transition year.
No. You misunderstood, Mr. Brown. I said there's a warrant article that you're going to develop for the withdrawal. That part of it will say, you know, that you also have forty-two thousand. That forty-two thousand will be added to the current budget for the next year.
But you misunderstood what I said. Well, I know you did. Because what I said was, we're in the budget process now. By the time the warrant article, the budget process will already be closed. So if the voters vote for it, we won't have the opportunity to put that money into the budget. That's what I said.
It's part of the warrant bar.
Thank you.
Priscilla, you were part of that committee?
Warrant article is very clear the way it has to be stated. The language is in ninety... One ninety-four, one ninety-six, whatever it is.
One ninety-four, sixty-two?
One, yes. And it's very clear it has to be in that warrant article.
And so RSA?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ethan?
I have, uh, first the monthly expense report through October two thousand fifteen.
Can you... Why aren't we showing on the teachers? Already, I mean, if we're encumbering the entire amount, we still shouldn't be short. Correct?
Some do higher, Steve. Came in a lower step.
A lower step?
Yeah. So they're replacing teachers that were a higher pay.
So you would think you'd be saving money, not... Short.
This is your, have an additional second grade teacher in there?
Is that one of them?
Well, wasn't all of that discussion after this budget was approved? So, how can that additional hire be affecting this budget?
Because the board approved hiring an additional position, so we put it in there, which, that's why that line's over.
Is special ed, new equipment, something you can discuss them?
That's straightforward, Steve, we have a student that requires some specialized equipment that we didn't anticipate that we had to purchase.
Nathan, did you move something around in the transportation retirement?
Return of...
Yeah. Forty-seven sixty-five, forty-one.
That's part of, um, the director's salary, which gets reimbursed.
Okay. Go ahead.
The next report I have is the revenue report through October. Any questions on that?
Go ahead.
Okay, and then, uh, the next report is the grant order review, report through October. Uh, we also have the treasurer's report for August and September, as well as the monthly reconciliation of the general fund for August and September.
Yes. I'm not permission to approve the treasurer's report for August and September. How's that to that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the matter?
That's not as bad.
No, we have, we have to approve the treasurer's report.
Oh, treasurer's report.
Yeah. No, just the treasurer's report. So all in favor?
Aye.
Then we have the food service negative balance report as of October twenty-eighth.
Okay, and that was corrected from all the negative balances that we had at the original, has that been corrected?
Yes, it has. Um, it took us a little time to get it done, but now, um, as of, I believe it was last week, we started sending out the, the notifications.
Can you quickly explain to me what that different eligibility's are, A, B, and C?
Yeah, um, last time I misspoke, A is for paid. Means it's a full paid.
They pay.
They pay, full price. B is reduced, and C is free.
So it's, so there should be no Cs on the...
I'm wondering why there's Cs on the...
There's a couple of Cs because, um, of timing. The first thirty days you get, it's, um, what was last year, it's carryover.
Mm-hmm.
And if they don't pass in the application in time, they're, it gets kicked off, and they go to paid, until they get it in, and then we redo it.
Okay, so these Cs are going to come off, or these people owe money?
They owe that money.
There's no grace period there?
The grace period was ten days.
From the first day of school? Don't they have thirty days?
Uh, no, thirty days from the first day of school.
And then ten days?
Compared to what they had last year. And then once the application's put in, they have ten days.
Ten days, too?
We notify them and they have ten days. For notification.
Okay, I guess I don't understand, if it's free, why, uh, why is there a charge on you of ten dollars? I guess it's...
Because they, they sent it in late. So by the time it kicked, the grace period ends, to the time they pass it in.
Okay.
It gets kicked to, um, paid.
Full pay?
Yeah.
So some of these are ten dollars, it's only a couple of days, but it's full pay?
Yeah.
And four days?
Four days.
And all of the ones that are As and Bs have been... Spoken to again, about filling out the form, have they already been contacted where it's November first?
Yes.
Can we see a copy of what Brian's sending out this year for a letter? At the next meeting, please?
Sure.
And also, um, Cafe Services Quarterly, are they coming in to speak with us?
May I ask that? May I ask that question this evening, and they said that the first quarter wasn't over till the end of the month? Just, just exactly?
No, the quarters, next week, right? Great, just close.
Would you actually like to see Cafe Services?
Yeah, I think that we'd like, I'd like to get a heads up on how things are going. Maybe they have ideas on how we can reduce our accounts receivables. Maybe, I, I just want to confirm the letter that's being sent out, too, so that there's not...
The letter is the same one as it was last year? I can still bring it in if you'd like.
Yep. If you could just bring it in so I can verify it.
And then you want Cafe Services to come in?
Yes, please.
Okay.
It is our responsibility, but they hand out, they send home the letters.
Right.
So we have to make sure that...
They have to make phone calls more.
Yeah.
I make phone calls to the higher end.
What just, you know what, I have to say, what bugs me is that there's four families that are in the same situation that they were in last year. And I don't know if they need help filling out the paperwork, or if it just doesn't matter, so, I don't know. None of those things, it just don't make sense.
So Brian sends out the letter, and Mr. Gregoire makes the phone calls. Thank you, Nathan.
You're welcome.
Enrollment numbers, Mr. Tursky?
Yes, in your package you have the enrollment numbers as of October twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen. Paul School, we have four hundred and forty-two students. Spaulding, a hundred and sixty-one students. Kingswood, seventeen students, for a total of six hundred and twenty students. You can see the missing, missing residency form count as well, Paul School, thirty-nine, Spaulding, eighty-two.
Have they been unenrolled yet?
No.
When are they going to be?
Not anytime in the near future, because I can't necessarily, nor could Rochester unenroll eighty-two students. I looked at this specifically, and, um, I went and I compared the residency forms that have been submitted to Paul School for elementary students to the high school students, where they have siblings at the Paul School, and another, the twenty of those, eighty-two, have submitted residency forms for their family, which is basically, we can confirm their sibling goes to Spaulding, they just haven't turned in their form for their high school student. But they have for their first grader, their second grader, or their third grader. So, some families are turning them in for their elementary student and not for their high school student, and we know that their siblings live in the same household. So it's just a matter of people turning in their forms.
So does that mean that you think that the distribution and how you offered up the forms this year was a positive or a negative?
It's positive, we had more come in this year at the beginning of the school year than we did last year.
So, from your position, what's your anticipated time of having this completed?
Well, I'm waiting for the first, um, the first bill that comes from, from Spaulding has the, the actual students that were being charged tuition for. I need to cross-check that with the missing residency forms. And at that point, once that's cross-checked, then letters will go home to those families requesting the residency form. I don't have an anticipated date, honey, at this time. Going to go through the next step of sending letters home. If you recall, last year, we went through the whole process of trying to track them down, and again, at the end of the school year, all the students that were on the tuition bill were residents of Wakefield. It's just a matter of getting people to turn the forms in. I can't make them turn the forms in. So we're doing our best on it, just keep track, keep track on it.
And what, do you have the number that we got in the budget for next year?
One eighty-five, I believe it was.
Is that one of them, okay, that's what I got on that audit sheet.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Tursky.
You're welcome.
All right.
I'm sure.
Go ahead.
I just make a suggestion, we might want to move the eighth grade MC trip proposal up. Mr. Solz here, I don't know if he wants to sit through all of the other...
He always sits through our meetings, though, he's in a hurry tonight. He always comes to our meetings. It's nice to see a, the same face every, every other meeting.
If that's okay with the board, we're gonna...
I appreciate that. Should I stand here, or?
No. You don't even have to stand if you don't want to, you can just sit in the front if you like.
Have a seat, or come up, come up and join us.
That's better.
I don't know if I can handle, okay, all right, oh, boy. Here we go.
Well, folks, you know, my name is Chris Sol, I teach seventh and eighth grade social studies here at Paul School. And, uh, for the past several years, as I've been teaching here, one of the big things the middle school team attempts to do every year is help motivate the students to fundraise for their trip to Boston, Massachusetts. And it's always been a success, I've always been interested in that trip and watching that trip succeed, and watching the kids have fun in Boston for their eighth grade trip. Over the years, I've done a lot of speaking with, you know, folks from other schools where their eighth grade trip is Washington, D.C. I personally did not go to Washington, D.C. until I was a junior in college. And I worked with another social studies teacher, friend of mine, to make that happen for us in a small group, and I realized, like, being in DC, you don't truly appreciate an understanding of civics and our nation's history until you walk through the National Archives and see the Constitution. Or you walk through Arlington National Cemetery and you see all the white headstones. Or you stand inside the Lincoln Memorial and really appreciate how far the country's come. So, I felt it was my duty to do some research the last few months. And I spoke with Mr. Gregoire and Mr. Tursky and my eighth grade team members, and we did some light work on putting together a proposal for a possible eighth grade Washington, D.C. trip to replace the eighth grade Boston trip. Uh, by which we would fundraise, we would spend three nights and four days in Washington, D.C. We would, uh, get down there on a bus. Uh, this particular proposal, um, has us bussing to and from the city and having the bus to take us throughout the cities. There would be no, uh, safety concerns, students getting lost on, like, the DC metro system, or, or splitting up at any time to go to different parts of the... I'd rather stay together as one herd, so to speak. So I wanted to bring this to your attention and answer any questions, maybe take in some, um, some thoughts or comments on it from you folks as you're the representative body of the, of the people and for the school, and see what your thoughts were, and if we should go for it, if not, and what support you could provide. Anything else you have to say?
Do you want to go first, Ryan? Go ahead.
I was just curious when the first fundraiser was going to happen. And which, which one of these planned activities was going to be?
Well, so, yeah, if you look at page, what, three of your proposal, you'll see fundraising activities planned, uh, at this point. Uh, it's worth noting that we, although we toyed with it, we felt it was financially irresponsible to attempt to do this this year with this eighth grade, even though they're a remarkable group of students. So, thinking optimistically, we, we want to attempt this with this year's seventh grade, which is a large group. But, um, at this point, they have already done fundraising towards their eighth grade trip, and we have not told them that we've, in the back of our heads, hoped it could be the capital. They're used to Boston, and they've heard about Boston, so it's been business as usual, we didn't want to get their hopes up on something. So they've been doing half-days, which is simply just pay a dollar to wear a hat, kids are into it. It's fairly simple to run, from a teacher perspective, and you make a couple hundred most of the times. Most of the activities you see on there, they would be doing their eighth grade year. Although certainly, uh, if we get the go-ahead to pursue this, you'll see the fundraising step up, probably starting in fifth grade. We're looking at doing one, if not all of those fundraisers more than once. We're also looking at potentially, um, having parents pay part of their child's way. We raise approximately, my eighth grade colleagues might correct me, we, we raise approximately like two hundred and twenty-five bucks for each eighth grade student to go to Boston. That by itself is a little over half of what it would take to go to Washington, D.C. So if we started, say, collecting class dues as early as fifth grade, we would be asking parents to come up with fifty dollars a year, five dollars a month, a school month, to help send their child to DC over time.
What if a family has a hard time doing that?
We've looked at that, I mean, obviously, the goal is to not have to use any money from anybody except what they fundraise. Having never attempted this, we wanted to have that backup plan of some money. I've already talked with the head of the PTA and a few folks here at the school that are part of groups like the PBIS group that does, you know, behavior and whatnot in the school. We would reach out to patriotic organizations in the town or in the area, like the VFW, and see if people would be interested in sponsoring a student of, um, of little means to, to attend the trip. Obviously, this isn't meant to be a trip for just one that can afford it. We would want to open it up to all eighth graders.
What about liability insurance and such, have you guys checked this? Have we contacted? I think that needs to be a priority, what if one of these kids gets lost, gets kidnapped? I'd really like some answers on that.
Absolutely, the trip, the trip group, uh... Absolutely. The trip, the trip group, they're called Jump Street and they operate out of Montreal and they do trips all over that country in the United States. They have, I think, an insurance policy that you can purchase along with your trip. It's actually very small, something like four or five dollars, I believe.
Okay.
Per student. That's something we would look at. I didn't toy with that because I personally don't know what the school.
Right, we need to answer to that, please.
Our students are covered in our liability on any field trip.
And we're sure about that? Okay.
School-sponsored activity.
Okay.
I had to assume that the Boston trip was covered too. And I mean, and even the potential of an overnight trip there. So that's good to know.
Now, I guess, what's a quadruple room? I guess I've never traveled, stayed with more than one person in a single room.
A quadruple room is four people to a room. That's usually, you're looking at like two queen-sized beds.
So you can have students sharing beds?
Yep, unless they're antsy about it.
I'm antsy about it. I'm antsy about it. The chaperones will be sharing beds as well?
It depends which group was there. I wanted to give you, you folks, an accurate look at what we're looking at. So I felt it was responsible of me to share with you all the quotes that I received.
No, I mean, you did a great job on.
If the chaperones were to, you know, kind of, you know, share quadruple rooms, it would be male chaperones in a quadruple room. Or it'd depend on the numbers of male or female chaperones, I don't know which teachers would go and the gender gap between them. But, and they would, they would do that, if it meant keeping the trip low enough for students of nothing means to go, I'd sleep on the floor for three days so I could experience the nation's capital. And most of my colleagues, all of my colleagues agree on that aspect of it.
Okay.
As for students sharing the same room, this is, this is how all these schools I've talked to do it. And I mean.
It just makes me wonder.
We would not have students of, we would not have girls and boys in the same room.
I would never assume you guys would do something like that, never. I would never, never assume that. Go ahead, Bonnie.
I just have to say that they do it for Camp Calumet as well. They kind of all bunk together. Some have double beds, some have bunk beds. It's just, they, and the kids usually all choose to stay with who they would normally have sleepovers with anyway. So, and.
Makes sense.
And, you know, sometimes it's nice to throw a child that they may not know in there because it could form a new friendship or whatever. I, I personally think it's amazing. I thought that we should be doing it for years. So you would have my full backing.
Have you been to Jump Street for three years in the past, before? Montreal, Quebec in DC. Typically, the biggest issue comes up when the kids, the boys typically don't want to sleep in the same bed as anybody and they'll be sleeping in the bathtub because they're gonna find a place to lay down, they're gonna sleep on the floor. And that probably is the biggest complaint back there from parents. You know, my child slept in the bathtub, the kids are flipping the coin, who gets the bed tonight? Well, I get it, I get it tonight, you're good tomorrow night.
That's how it works.
And that's exactly how it works. That's pretty typical. Nice thing about Jump Street is they also provide security so they have room in the halls at night. So the chaperones can sleep naturally on their A-game the next morning. And they're roaming around DC making sure kids all get on and get off the bus. That we start with 52, we end with 52, it's the same 52. That's always important.
And why they picked a week before vacation?
The good thing about April is it's off-peak times.
Okay.
So that saves us automatically about $100 per student because June is like the time to go. Also, June, I learned this especially in DC on that NHD trip that I attended in June. June is a hot, humid month to be in DC, marching around the city, seeing the places. I went in April a couple of years ago, it was much more tolerable. This way, I see us going to DC, coming home that, I think, Friday.
Isn't it apple blossom season in people?
And then they would go, they would go home to their April vacation.
Cherry blossom.
Yeah, cherry blossom, I think it's late April, early May is cherry blossom season.
Really? I thought they were a little earlier than I knew.
Ralph?
What's a schmuzzle?
Schmuzzles are pencils.
That smell.
They're pencils that smell and what we do is we buy buckets of them and we sell them to kids and like we get green apple scent flavored pencil.
They're like the markers that smell like fruit, Ralph. They're just pencils.
I told you we want to buy some of them. How do I get my hands on them?
I thought it was a pencil for schmers.
Yeah, buy some.
I can buy some through the fundraiser.
Sure.
I was about to have pencils.
We sell them during lunch and I don't think, honestly, I don't think we sold them the last year. But two years ago, we sold them constantly. The whole classroom would smell like black cherry or green apple or whatever the kid bought.
Nice. Ralph?
This is a good presentation, but I'm curious what, what are they gonna do for this year's eighth grade?
The eighth grade is looking at an overnight Boston trip. You know, we came before you folks last year and asked for.
That's right, you did.
An overnight Boston trip and the parents weren't as confident in it as we thought. Or I should say, a vocal minority of parents, you know, most of them were up for it. So we said, you know what, if this isn't the year, this isn't the year, and we did a day trip. So I believe the eighth grade is currently looking at an overnight.
So have you polled the parents on this one?
A few, a few. But again, we didn't want to put the cart before the horse. I wanted to do the research, check with my bosses, go up the chain command. And look, the reality is, same thing could happen. We could roll this out to seventh grade parents within the next month, I would hope. And they could say, no, not you guys, not my kid, not this year, not ever. Back to the lab, I guess, and maybe another year would be into it, or maybe we just stick with Boston. And I'm comfortable with that, if that's what the public wants. But, you know, I've been hired to teach the kids social studies and I think this would be a great way to benefit the students.
This would be an awesome project. I agree.
Are you looking for a motion from us tonight to approve this?
Yes, please. Then he'd be able to forward.
Yeah.
Present it to parents.
I would love to make a motion to approve our eighth grade going to Washington. If they make that motion.
Discussion. Just if there are some concerns, whether they be from board members or parents, we can come back and readdress this, even though the motion that we're making tonight is.
As far as I'm concerned, you guys are all invited to parent meetings. Come and see what we roll out from the parents and ask questions as though you were a parent with a student going.
Wait, so many people on that stuff?
Keep your guy in charge of the administration.
That would be great.
There you go.
Can we go?
No, it's more like nurse, doctor, lawyer.
It is.
We can't go?
Correct. You know, you try to have something, the chaperones go that I, you know.
I'll get my own room.
I cannot stop cruising on down.
Cruising all down DC!
And I've had people follow us. So you always want to have somebody who can help you out in gym, whether it's a doctor, a lawyer, a police officer, someone who knows the ropes when you get into some kind of situation, correct?
Great. Oh, in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Just keep us updated and if you could shoot us emails so we could attend the meetings, that would be super.
I would add one other thing.
No.
Hey, you had the vote. I'm comfortable.
No, add it, whatever you want to say.
I'd like to see the board in the future, and I'm speaking as a resident, not just an employee now, consider supporting financially the trip in the future. There's a precedent in line already where an overnight educational trip is supported and money is appropriated by the district. We're comfortable moving forward and fundraising by ourselves and asking parents for money. But before I go and ask parents for money, I felt it was my responsibility to first say to you folks.
You want to see us put some money into the budget for that? Is that what you're asking?
If, if the body wills it, you know, I also think let us earn your, let us earn that. Let us, let us fundraise, but let us prove to you and prove to the parents that this is going to be a safe, financially feasible trip. I mean, I have this proposal.
You did a great job on that proposal.
I would not expect 100 percent. I think it's important that students work towards a trip like this overtime, prove their behavior level throughout multiple school years. But with this being budget season and with our first crack at this being 2017, I would like to see at least some discussion in the future around potentially supporting the eighth grade trip. And that's all I'll say.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
You made a good point.
Thank you. Great job.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, policy EEA video and audio surveillance on school property.
I can speak for this matter, Chair. So I discovered that we actually do not have this policy in place in our massive policy handbook. This, this addresses our current video and audio surveillance that we have on school property. But also, this, this has come to light as of September 2015. If you look down at the note to the New Hampshire School Boards Association, there was basically a new, new legislature. They had passed RSA 189:65. And it relates to having the school board approve an audio, video/audio surveillance in classrooms and that you also have to have a public hearing in order to allow for that to happen. And teachers and parents need to sign off on allowing for that to happen within the classrooms, any type of video or audio. So that's a change in the law. So policies have been updated. And this is the New Hampshire School Boards Association's sample policy that was originally drafted for video and audio surveillance on school property. But if you look at the second paragraph of this policy, this is the new, this was added into the original policy based on that change in the law. So, so any feedback you could?
Go ahead, Ralph.
Second paragraph was just added by the legislature. It almost looks as if it couldn't happen if all students or parents or guardians of all students approved that.
No, it's for, it's, and the parent guardian of all students, but you have to get a consent form from, from all students that are going to be within that classroom that are being videotaped.
If one says no, you really can't do it.
According to this.
Steve?
And it's also kind of contradictory, was saying that anyone can be audio recorded irregardless, but yet permission from teachers and students are required. You know, I think it should be all or none, as far as the audio goes.
I quite frankly, don't have a problem with it. I think it gives our teachers a chance to be caught doing something right. I think it's a good tool for them to use to look back on maybe how they handled the situation or a certain lesson and, or maybe if they, you know, it, sometimes it gives you an extra set of eyes and if you go back and take a second look, you're like, wow, I could have done that different. And I think that there could be more positive than negative. And I think in certain cases, say you have a child that says that they're getting bullied in class and it's always when the back is turned, I think that this could be a good tool to use to help protect the children that are in. I do think that all parents should have to approve of it because you never know, everybody has certain limiting, you know, certain, certain things that are okay and not okay. But I would think that it would give them a chance to really utilize this information.
Steve?
And, well, once again, like it goes, how many teachers are actually going to say, sure, audio record me? And also, that would make it discriminatory.
Go ahead.
So the policy itself, if you take out paragraph two, is for school-wide audio/video surveillance. You know, security cameras, for example, that addresses that piece. Policy, the second paragraph in the policy, it was, it was put in there to protect the rights of the teacher and of the students from being filmed. Therefore, they have to give approval in order to be filmed. And it's, it's based specifically on instruction. Not if somebody was being bullied in the classroom, you don't go in and put a video camera in there to catch the occurrence. This is, this is for a teacher videoing their lesson with a class or an administrator going in and videoing a teacher as part of their evaluation. It protects the teacher. They might not want that to happen, but it also protects the students from, from.
I took it totally wrong. I took it totally different.
No, this is not, this is not a secure, you wouldn't place a camera in a classroom for a purpose other than instructional or catch a, you know, if you have a second grade class that's going to sing a tune in the classroom, they might videotape that. So it's strictly based around instructional activities or activities in general. It's not placing cameras in to catch some sort of.
But you could use it for so much more.
You could use it for so much, but the intent of catching the student do something isn't, isn't what it's drafted for.
Mr. Gregoire?
We are, you know, we were doing this prior to the law coming out where, you know, I've had teachers who request that go in and video their class so we can go over it together. We can look at what they're doing, what went well, what we could do better. In current, you know, we talk about flipping classrooms. Under this new RSA, teachers can't even film themselves in their classroom without students present. They have to give themselves consent. They can only give themselves consent after you have a public hearing and create a policy. So they can't, they, right now, I've got teachers that are coming, this is crazy, Jared. I can't even film myself in my class at 4 o'clock, the way this, the way the law is written. And they're disappointed. They're coming, over Halloween, they wanted me to go down and video the kids reading their stories, their movie stories. Said we can't do that. It's a violation of that new RSA. Ah, she's so, we're working on it. And really, it's more about instructional practice. It's, you know, you see the stuff we have on the TV, that stuff that comes out of that and some videos that come out of that also about, you know, the science experiments or play. I mean, everything in this building is a classroom by and large, you know.
So you can't have that?
No, we can't. And currently under the RSA, we cannot film a classroom without, without having a public hearing, the policy and permission from both the teacher and all the students.
Well, I think we should probably have the first of two public hearings as soon as possible before we go approving the policy. So therefore, I make a motion to set up a date to have the first of two public hearings on this policy.
Steve?
Well, I just, we just heard that this is basically geared specifically to instruction. But if you read it, it's the use of video and audio devices on district property to ensure the health, welfare, and safety of all students, staff, and visitors to the district property. So that's, that's contradictory to what we were just told.
Go ahead.
Keep in mind, the bulk of the policy addresses surveillance on property for safety, health, and well-being. The second paragraph addresses audio and video recording in a specific classroom. This classroom in general is what this second paragraph tackles.
There's no cameras in this classroom?
No. But Jared, Mr. Gregoire will walk in with his iPad to film a lesson going on right here and the teacher would have to get permission for him to do that and the students' parents would have to get permission for him to do that. That's where the second paragraph.
Cameras in classes right now. We have it in the gymnasium, which is a classroom. We have it in the library, which is an instructional room. And we have it in the computer lab, which is an instructional room. Those that have the security and things of that nature also, but we do have those in what we consider classrooms.
So under this law, that has to come out?
No.
Make sure.
Why?
Because the, these, our surveillance cameras, you could consider the multipurpose room a classroom when a classroom's going in, but when there's a general gathering going on in there, okay? Let's say there's like the cafeteria during lunch, we have surveillance.
okay, let's say there's, like, the cafeteria during lunch, we have surveillance cameras, and that is a general gathering, or an assembly is a general gathering, so that's where the... But the library's not. The library... Well, the computer room, right. The library could consider a place of general gathering as well. Instruction happens in there, but it's a, it's a place of general gathering.
So, you need a motion to, to have a public, public hearing? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah.
I made the motion, but I didn't get a second.
I just wanted to clarify that that's what we were...
I don't know how to move on school buses either.
We have a policy for school buses.
So, are you asking for a blanket approval for the whole building?
Somebody might want a second.
No, 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 no. No, it's just a...
I'll second the motion. The motion's a discussion.
Okay.
Sorry. To answer Bonnie's question, it's, it's to approve the policy, so that's what the motion would, would be. Ralph's motion was to have a public hearing before you act on it in any way whatsoever. Keep in mind, when we bring a policy forward, you review it, and if there aren't any amendments to it that you would like to make at this time, you move it for a first reading, and then it would go to the next board meeting for a second, second reading. Ralph's motion is to have a public hearing before you even do a first read, approval for first reading, correct?
Well, if, if law dictates public hearings on the issue, I think we need to have the first public hearing as, as, you know, as far as the law, and if it requires public hearings on this particular policy, I think that my motion is to try to set up that first public hearing.
But I think, I don't know, withdraw them, second. But I think that what Mr. Tursi is stating is we need to have a first approval?
Well, you could do it either way.
We can do it either way?
You don't have to have multiple public hearings. The way I saw this playing out is if the board didn't have any amendments this evening, you could, you could move it for approval for first reading, then we set up the public hearing, and after the public hearing, based on any feedback from the public, you can make amendments and then approve it for a second reading, and it goes into place. So, however you'd like to do it, but you don't need to have multiple public hearings. The way the law reads, you need to have a, a public hearing.
Go ahead, Ralph.
So, it's completely up to you as to how you want to tackle it.
But your first public hearing would probably eliminate the, the first reading, and then a public hearing, which, if you have amendments and stuff, then you've got to amend it, and you've got to have your first hearing, or your first public reading of the amended version. So, I think if you have your public hearing prior to your first reading, then you're going to save time and effort. I just, once you have amendment, you need to have a new first reading of newly amended policy.
No, you don't.
What?
No, you don't.
So, you can amend the policy all the way through to a second reading?
Steve.
There's another contradict, contradiction, paragraph three only states that signs would be posted that video cam is may be in use. There's nothing there mentioned about audio recording, like the first paragraph does. I, you know, video recording, I don't find, but audio recording, you know, in this day and age, you still need someone's permit, or you have to notify them, and they have the right. So, you can't just audio-record someone against someone's...
Without that, no.
Permission.
Mr. Tursi.
So, I presented it to you this evening, do you have any suggestions for amended wording? Just as I said, this is the draft policy out of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. It's completely up to you as to how you want to amend it, so if you'd like to offer some wording.
I'd like to offer the opinion that it's, it's not the proper procedure.
Steve.
And then you get into, you know, you're going to make a video and audio recording possibly part of a student's education record. That's not necessarily a good thing either. Especially, it gets real sticky when you try to start audio-recording what people are saying. I mean, there, there is still a law against doing that, so, and now you're going to put that as, in a student's permanent education record? I think we need to think about this for a little bit before we jump off the cliff.
Mr. Tursi?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. The, the cameras we have in use within the school, whatever they may be at this point, they're video and audio or just video?
Just video.
Okay. Would that change too? Would this change that?
No.
No, it's just, so this is just going to be lesson, lesson plans in the classroom?
We currently do not have a policy about the cameras that are on the property. That's a problem. We should have this policy in place.
We should have this policy in place.
We should have had it in place the first time cameras were put on the property.
Ralph.
Are you asserting that there's no cameras with audio recordings going on in this building?
Not that I know of.
Steve.
There again, it goes back to the audio piece. We were just told that this wouldn't change what we presently have, but this policy could, and now we hear that, well, there could be already, but not that someone knows about. You've got to be real careful about audio-recording someone, because you can land up to get the school district in big town lawsuits.
Well, they all sign permission slips, I don't see that...
Nobody has.
But they, but when they put this into place, obviously, they're going to send permission slips to the parents and go, hey, this is what's going on, we need your permission, we need consent to do this. Bonnie?
I guess I have to say, you have how many cell phones, and although cell phones are not supposed to be used at school, there are more videos and crazy things being recorded...
In this school?
In this school, and I'm not saying by staff or student, but probably by both, that audio is probably already in play in the building.
Audio is...
Just like it is in every other building in the world.
Mr. Gregwell.
We do not, the cameras that we have installed here as part of the security upgrades, they don't have the capacity for audio recording.
Okay.
I can, I can tell you that.
Okay.
That's not happening. Either, as you said, either recording devices in this building, there have been for decades.
Does this mean you're stuck in your block?
It does not. I'm not a teacher, I'm not in the classroom.
Okay.
I do it at my office.
All right.
He doesn't have to give himself permission to film himself.
And I don't, I, so, I, that's, I...
I like the law. Did Ralph's motion fail for lack of a second, or I would... I believe so.
I would like to make a motion to move EEAA to the next agenda for the first reading.
Bonnie, doesn't Ralph have to withdraw his motion first?
It died of lack of a second, didn't it?
Thank you.
I think if we could have a couple days to think this through and look over it, and come and prepare at the next meeting for language, that that would be a best rate on the floor.
Sounds great.
That's just my motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bonnie, would you read the motion?
Um, I make a motion to bring EEAA to the first reading at the next meeting.
And then we set up the public hearing.
Sorry, you're going to do the rest of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, all opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
Mr. Adams, do you want me to see if we can take yours out of order, so you don't have to sit here through this, or are you okay with this?
I, sure, you can if you want to.
Is that okay, we do the, yes, Mr. Tursi?
You can. I'm sure Mr. Adams would probably want to stick around for the warrant article discussion as well.
Oh, that's right, so let's just do the, sorry, there's hopes up, nothing.
We're going to have a whole agenda, so...
Okay.
And keep in mind, Madam Chair, the bids is just to open the bids this evening.
That's right.
So...
Okay. All right, well, let's discuss the warrant article development.
I can start on this.
Go for it.
So, outside of our standard warrant articles, you'll see a warrant article for your operating budget, for your SAU budget, elected positions that are up, and you'll also see a warrant article for the withdrawal study committee's recommendation. Other than those warrant articles, what I'd like to recommend is we do a warrant article for the next phase of the roof. A warrant article, and I'll talk about all three of these in specifics to a degree. Ball, the ball field, upgrading the ball field, and third, potentially purchasing a facilities truck. So, start with the roof. Keep in mind that we have a five-phase plan, we're going into phase three, and, let's see.
Do you have copies of last year's wrestling report?
The warrant article?
Mm-hmm.
So?
Should be in the town report.
Yeah. I didn't bring copies of last year's warrant articles.
Definitely.
They weren't even there either.
No?
That's a proposed, proposed one, just in my share.
So, wait, did you say, you have it right here in the packet that you received?
I don't have it, it's in the school district report.
I understand that, I didn't know if he had a copy here with the materials that he had handed out tonight.
Last year, we put a warrant for the roof in particular, we put into enough monies to do phase two. This year, we're up for phase three, which was approved, again, as a five-phase project with LSG LLC, was the company that did the first two phases. The third phase, if you'd like to write these numbers down, the third phase was forty-two thousand, two hundred and seven dollars.
Can you repeat that one time, please?
Forty-two thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. That's what's on the docket for this coming summer, that's phase three. We currently, we currently have in the school roof fund thirty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars, and seventy-six cents. So, you can see, we're just shy of doing phase three. However, I'm going to make a recommendation, since we are shy of, just shy of doing phase three, you might want to think about putting the monies in for phase four in this warrant article, which opens up your warrant articles for the next fiscal year, because there was discussion around constructing your own SAU building, and putting articles in place for that, so you might be a little more proactive, tackle your roof earlier, and be able to open up a warrant article for the construction of your SAU building. Therefore, you're not hitting the taxpayers with the roof project and monies for the SAU.
So, what are you proposing?
So, the, so phase, phase four is a total of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Okay.
So, if you add the forty-two thousand, two oh seven, forty-eight thousand, six fifty-two, that's the total cost for the next two phases, subtract out what we already have, which is the thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, that means you would need to put a warrant together for fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that would cover the next two phases. However, that's cutting it a little close, because that leaves your roof fund with zero money, so, just wanted to give you those numbers and let you chew on it a little while and see what you want to do. Given my thoughts of doing the two phases, since you're so close on this third phase, is to open up your warrant articles for potential construction costs, or at least, I should say, potential, putting a warrant together for the first time for constructing a SAU building.
Okay, now, ball fields?
Ball fields, we estimate based on last year of renovating, I should say, upgrading the ball field, is twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And then for a facilities vehicle, approximately twenty thousand dollars.
Based on what?
I believe that was based on the town currently purchased. I think it's a used, I want to say, cat time, maybe? But Joe looked at what it would cost to potentially have a truck that...
A pickup or like a dump?
I don't believe it was a dump, it was a pickup, they could do some minor plowing and stuff, so...
I understand that. We have bids out, snow maintenance, I don't see, I don't see the need for a facilities truck. We have dumpsters getting filled with trash, and companies coming in at a fee to remove the trash.
Sure. Can we tackle each one of those, and then we'll get to the truck, Ralph? So, so we don't...
So, do you need an answer on these tonight, or is this something we can think on and get back to...
Hey, you can think on it, by all means, I just wanted to start the process, because we start, we meet with the budget committee next week, I'd like to be able to bring them warrant articles early in the process, so, not, I'm not talking at the next meeting, but feel free to think about it, but I want to start that conversation now, so we can have some answers for the budget committee when they ask.
Bonnie?
Are we not going to have any information available about the parking lot for this warrant article, the warrant articles issue?
I sent the...
I got that email?
The email from Jim Reins a while ago about how he...
Oh, it was delayed, yes.
Well, not only how it was delayed, but what he was hoping to be able to get in front of the board, in front of the planning board, potentially for some sort of parking lot prior to having to submit warrant articles. The way that looks is, we might have to have, you know, a, a currently unplanned meeting with the budget committee to talk about a warrant. He's trying to push it through as quickly as he can, get it in front of the planning board before our warrant articles are due, but, again, with the delay on the deed, it really went through his back, and he's coming next meeting, because there's two, they're presenting, they're presenting two options. If you check your emails, I sent that out today, there's two, two options that he was proposing, that he was asking my opinion on it, Bob's opinion, and I said, that's a board decision on what options to go with based on what they have at this point. So, he's going to present the two options in order to move forward and bring it, to follow up on making, doing the plan and bring it to the planning board.
Ralph?
Why wouldn't we want to still raise inappropriate some monies towards that project this year, whether it's twenty thousand, fifty thousand, the whole, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars this is going to cost?
Well, I, we do, but last year, the budget committee smacked us around because we didn't even have a viable plan to give to them, so if we can push it through and have some sort of viable plan to go before the budget committee and say, hey, guys, we did, we did what you asked, can we have, can we have some funds now? I think it's going to go a lot better than if we go in there and say, hey, we're planning it, but we still don't have enough to show you. I think we're better off trying to get that plan in place.
What's the last date for the warrant articles?
I believe it's the second Tuesday in January.
And it's always up to the voters, it's not up to the budget committee or the...
Well, no, and I understand that, Ralph, but, I understand that, but the voters are going to be there for that public hearing, and I'm sure they would like to see that, that we have a plan, because this thing has been stalled and stopped and, and made a mess of for so long, it would be nice to be able to go before the voters and the budget committee and go, hey, look, we did our homework, here's our plan. It just makes more sense to do it that way. Go ahead, Mr. Tursi.
The ideal process is to have this civil engineering design, goes in front of the planning board, planning board provides their input, that then goes out to bid for the full project, and then that bid is what you develop your warrant articles on, whether it's do it all in the first year, two years, however it might be, but then you go to the community, go to the voters, and say, here's, here's the plan, here's the bid that was approved, and this is the cost of the... that was approved, and this is the cost, the overall cost of doing it from the beginning to the end, and then you present that and request monies based on a plan that's been approved and that the voters understand went through the bidding process.
The fact of the matter is, there's already enough money left in the fund to get that a flat dirt driveway, a flat dirt parking lot, if you really wanted to, but probably don't really want to because it doesn't serve everybody's purposes, other than getting the parking lot done.
So would you like to think about these for...
Does anybody want to move on these tonight, or you want to be able to think on it and come back with any other questions? Yes.
Twenty, I, I don't, if we even need a facilities truck, I don't think we need a twenty thousand dollar truck. Well, I'm basically talking about a truck to go from here to the dump and...
And even the dump, we've got the dumpsters, Steve. We've already had the...
I understand, but I'm just saying, like I began with, even if we decided that we did in fact need one, which I'm not sure we do, but even, and so if we, even if we do, I don't think we need a twenty thousand dollar truck, because you're only gonna basically be going just around town. From here to the dump, from here to Long Meadow, or from here to Naperville, I don't think you need a twenty thousand dollar truck to go from here to the dump.
I'd like to make a motion to move these to the next agenda so we have some time to think and research them.
I'll second that. All in favor?
For discussion?
Oh, go ahead.
Talking about ball field spending, twelve-five, facilities vehicle, twenty. Roof, is there a number that, other than the forty-two, two oh seven, that we need to raise and appropriate? Is there a number you're hoping for?
The fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five is to do phase three and phase four, even though on the timeline, we're just, we're ready to do phase three this coming summer. Okay? So that would do phase three and phase four. If you only want to do phase three, then it comes out to four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents, so five thousand dollars is what you would have to put a warrant article in order to get just phase three done.
Can we think about a forty thousand dollar figure to raise and appropriate through a warrant article? That would help, you know, towards phase five at the end, I mean, after this. Since five-phase project, right?
No, that, if you only did forty thousand dollars, that would help towards phase four.
Right.
The total for both is fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, Ralph?
That will finish...
That would be three and four. If you want to put something in for five, you would have to add on to that fifty-three thousand.
No, you'd have to add on another forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars, that's what five, phase five is.
Well, yeah, I mean, but he, if he was adding money in to just add to, to have it, it would be...
No, I'm trying to find a figure that accomplishes the third phase and puts money towards the fourth phase, maybe not the entire amount. At least I hadn't added up these warrant articles, there's gonna be a decision made over what really needs to be spent.
So that number you're talking about, Ralph, would be anywhere between five thousand dollars and fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand dollars. Okay? That would put you between the two phases.
Yeah, I mean, I had a forty thousand dollar figure in mind. I'm just looking for a number that's valid.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Just put it on the next...
To put it on the next agenda, so we all have time to digest this information, Steve.
Aye.
Okay. And we have some lawn care and landscaping maintenance bids, and the winter grounds and roof maintenance bids to open.
So if you recall, we open the bids, the little board opens the bids in public, and we bring the bids back, do a summary sheet for you.
Right.
Bids are always available for you to view and read. So we'll bring a summary sheet for the next...
Can we get three bids?
We're opening them now.
Can we get three?
There's three in front of me.
Excellent.
But they might not be the same one?
But they not be the same thing.
Technically, you should have six.
Right.
Well, if you...
Unless there's multiple...
Unless there's multiple bids in one package. We shall see.
Three on two bids, I don't think you got three on your bids.
No, we are...
Before we start talking about numbers, you may want to consider complying with the policy, you're looking for three bids, and if you start some poor numbers and you really want to stick to policy, we send it back out for a second or a third bid. I know policies don't mean much around here, but yeah, it's pretty important.
Well, we're opening, so we need to at least acknowledge that we're opening them.
I was just gonna do a check though, to see what we have for it.
We have one for the spring and summer and fall.
Why couldn't we open them, say what companies they're from, and then let them go back out, and then they can bring back the information next week and then...
You might have three bids on here.
That's what we're doing.
But without, we'll leave some of the dollar amounts, eh?
No, I'm not, I'm...
That's what I'm saying, just don't believe the dollar amounts.
Summer scape. Cool. They sent us a bid on the summer.
Lawn maintenance.
Yeah. How-to, is the lawn maintenance?
Going?
No, I believe this is the following bid here.
So we don't have enough bids.
How-to in summer, you said?
Summers, it's called summers?
Sumner.
Sumner?
Scape.
Sumner scape.
I think the policy says when feasible.
Right.
Once again, we put something out.
And so, and we have how-to, did the, again, snow removal, as well as the landscaping, so. So I guess... Bonnie, go ahead.
So I see that we have two for lawn care and one for plowing. At what point in time, when, I think we built in that policy when feasible for a reason, because this seems to be how our bidding process goes, is that we never have enough bids to successfully follow the policy to a T.
Where, where would these advertise?
Union Leader, the Fosters, Carroll County, it's all outlined directly in the policy.
In the policy.
Costs you about seven hundred and fifty of a thousand dollars to put a bid out, based on advertising. One thousand, one dollars to put a bid out, based on your current policy.
Isn't it true that at times we send projects to certain contractors in town to see if they're interested in bidding on these projects? Do we practice that? Has that been a practice?
No.
Hmm? I think it has. Isn't there a list of contractors who want to be contacted when there, when there are projects going on?
Mr. Adams, is there?
When we, we build that list from the activity that we, that we get, and that's been a blend of contractors that we have that will bid in Milton as well as Wakefield.
So there is a list.
And for, for this, we haven't had companies show up for this contract.
Go ahead, Ralph.
How difficult would it be to look at the Yellow Pages and see lawn and lawn maintenance companies and mail them a direct mailing? How difficult would that be? Is that against the law, or is that, you know, no solicitations allowed, or it seems to me that the word is not getting out, and there's not a real big push to let it out? You cannot have a competitive bidding process with one bid. I don't know how you can interpret that as a competitive bidding process. And the thing that you need to consider is the cost that's unchecked. The competitive bidding process is there for that reason, so that there's people providing competitive honest bids, and the taxpayers don't just shout, oh, oh, we got one contractor doing this, and that's the way it's gonna be. No other policy. I'd like to make a motion and put it back out to bid, or do a direct mailing to contractors. I don't think, if you had an RFP that was fifteen pages in the, how much does it cost to mail one of these out every time there's a meeting? Not this one, because there's no address on it. It's a big bucks to mail these things out?
Depends on whether it's certified or not.
Yeah, I would think you need to have a certified package go to, to folks on the, you open up the Yellow Pages and you see a half a dozen different businesses there. I can tell you that the mechanical RFP hasn't gotten a whole lot of publicity, and it's just a shame that there's no effort to make sure we comply with a policy and have competitive bidding process. There's need for effort, I should say.
I'll second that, to send it out to, so we try to solicit people through phone book or, I mean, you gotta, you gotta, I mean, I know, personally know, there's more than one or two landscaping companies in town. And there's a lot of people that plow in the winter. So whether you, if that wasn't done, maybe try the...
Bonnie?
I guess I'm looking at the people that did choose to bid, and if you are someone who works on bid work, you know what season things come out, and you read the papers, and you read the bulletin boards, and you read the websites, and you are prepared to bid on the work that you would like to have, and you research them going forward to find out when they're coming up for bid, is how my experience with working on bid work works. I find it disheartening that after last year's discussion on how to advertise the most successfully, and we collaborated as a board and put forth what our administration should be doing, that once again, we are backpedaling to say that we need to do more legwork. I know that if you can personally look at someone and say, heads up, the bids are coming out, if you're interested, this is when to show up, that's the polite and courteous thing to do if you know that they're in the business. But I think to spend the extra effort and time to send something out to the majority of people who may not be interested in bidding, who or are interested in bidding, if that's their job, they're looking to do that all the time, and they don't need us to send them a package. They are already on the prowl for work if they're accepting new jobs. I disagree with sending it back out to bid. I believe that this is the reason that the policy states the way it is, and it was voted to keep the policy, to say, when deemed necessary, and I am gonna advocate that it's okay to disagree with others and that I can have my personal feelings like they have their personal feelings, but I think that it's a waste of, I think it's a waste of time at this point in time, and I'm gonna say that, because I think if you bid for a living, you know when things come up and you advocate for yourself. So the people that took the time to walk through, and I don't know who both of these companies are, but I would think that they were proactive, or I should say, I know one, I don't know the other. I think that they were proactive for their own business and that we should move forward.
Bob?
I think we follow policy, but I agree with Ralph. We have a list of proven people that have done things in the past, that we should give them the opportunity. But I agree with Bonnie, they should be following the newspapers and times of plowing season and lawn care season when it comes out. It's, it's a tough thing to go through. They have to have one plowing bid, but we have a ton of people in this town that plow a ton. It's, it's a tough situation to pick a, a, one bid with a number that's just there when we know we probably get a J-bro.
So...
Bonnie?
I'm just gonna say that if you, if you've done plowing or maintenance in town, I can say that there's a very courteous group of people that do, do bids by, you know, that do do bids, and a lot of times, if someone puts something out to bid, it's courteous to call and say, are you not interested in having this? Are you giving this up? You know, is there a reason you're giving it up? And there's a lot of communication, and I think that there's a direct line of respect, because you don't want it to be so cutthroat that you're hurting your competition or burning bridges, because that person's truck could help you when yours breaks down. And I think that our town is like that, and other people will not bid if they know the person that's been doing it continuously bids out of being polite. Because you don't want to take work away from someone.
It doesn't always happen that way.
But that's the way that, that's the experience that I have.
It more often happens that many contractors say, why, why should I bid? I know where it's going. It's already, you don't even have to put an RFP out. We already know where it's going. That's the scuttlebutt downtown at the coffee shop.
So we have a motion on the table?
What's the motion?
The motion is to place the projects back out to bid and to call or contact contractors.
How long would that take?
Should, should take less than two weeks, wouldn't it?
And another thousand dollars?
It has to be in for two weeks continuously, so it'll take longer than that.
It's longer, yeah.
Because it'll lead time to Carroll County moves.
What if we just go out and make some bone calls?
That's what I was gonna suggest, but...
Let's make some bone calls. What, what would that, is, yeah, there's more than one person who plows in town, there's more, more than one landscaper. Take a couple of weeks, make some, make some phone calls, and then that'd be it.
Um, can we, can we do that because we already bid?
That's a slap on the, that's a slap on the face for the people who took the time to come through the walkout and put the bid up.
Yeah, that's, that's just ridiculous.
I mean, I like the idea personally.
I like the idea, but it should have been done at the beginning.
It should have been done at the beginning, not now.
But just because it hasn't been done, that means you shouldn't do it.
But it should have been done at the beginning, and I think it's a slap in the face for the people who took the time out of their schedule to come up here and do the walkthrough. I'm sorry.
It, it's a bigger slap to the taxpayer's pocket.
And it's a slap to the people who elected, the people to sit at this board, to do due diligence, comply with policy.
We are complying with our policy.
Don't be wacky.
When feasible, it says...
You blame everybody for not following policy?
I'm saying, let's get a competitive bidding thing going. You can't have competitive, I'm glad to see somebody else bid, bid, bid on the lawn maintenance. That's great. But you can't call one bid a competitive bid. You can't...
I, I agree with that.
I totally agree with that.
But I believe we, we are following policy.
We are. Mr. Adams?
Just calling to add, the, the other company that didn't bid on the winter work, didn't do it because they are already at capacity. They just couldn't...
So we had other bidders on site?
No, I'm saying that one company that gave you a lawn bid only?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't bid on the winter work because he still pulled, he just got, saw what he pulled up.
Okay.
So that happens, to add on to what Bonnie's saying, it's all depending on what you have for business, if you're busy with your resources.
I don't know if we have enough time for the plowing side, but we definitely have to do a lawn bid.
Okay, this motion on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Adams. Steve, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we use the Wakefield and Milton West to call people for those two projects.
I'll second that.
How can we do that?
That's putting it out to bid.
You're putting it out to bid. You can't do that. We just voted it's going to be not to.
You can do that. That's different than putting... We're not gonna be putting it out to as advertising what we've already done. We're gonna do the part that wasn't done the first time around.
It's soliciting bids. Which is the same thing.
And what's the problem with soliciting bids?
There's absolutely no problem with soliciting bids. It should've been done at the beginning of the process, not after we've already said no.
Well, I can't argue with that. But for the taxpayer's sake, we should take the Wakefield and Milton West and make a few phone calls. But then again, it's just other people's money, which doesn't really equate to being that important around here.
Is there a second?
I did second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, under old business, I put in vote... We had to vote on the final budget numbers? From our last budget meeting, Mr. Tracy set up those numbers for us?
I asked if you'd bring your booklets.
I did.
I don't have the number.
You don't have the number?
Yeah, I have the number.
Okay, well, we'll be right back. Well, I didn't... I kinda took one from Nate because mine's in the car and I was too lazy to get it. And I think you took it back because now I can't find it.
So your bottom line number for FY seventeen proposed budget is nine million, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, ninety-seven cents.
Six eighty-four?
Yep. And ninety-seven cents.
Nine thousand from... It was printed on the twenty-eighth of October.
Correct. I was putting the eight thousand dollars in.
If you associate with costs.
Certainly. Michael, I guess I felt a concern before we approved this number. At least I have a concern. I was disappointed to find out that Tuesday's meeting was canceled because of lack of information. And I learned very clearly last year from the Budget Committee that it's in our best interest to give them the best information we can as quickly as possible.
The first time around.
The first time. And have our ducks in a row. And I guess I'm concerned that that, once again, this year was not the case. And that means that it could... It's gonna delay all of our meetings with them again. Sometimes wreaking havoc on some people's schedules that are really tight and fitting it in. And I know yours is just as tight this time of year. I guess I'm curious to know what information are they asking for that we didn't have readily available to you so that we can move forward on Tuesday?
You'll see that all the information that's provided you this evening was provided us with a list on...
How long ago did they ask for this information?
You get the email Saturday.
Right, but going on last year's budget sessions, this was all stuff we had to provide to them last year.
We put together a budget booklet that had all of the information that was in there last year. So...
Did that count all the additional things that they asked for during our conversations?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
My understanding is so there were additional... And we're gonna keep this list for next year. So it would be nice to have the list a little earlier. And we would've provided any information that the Budget Committee had. We have a rep that sits on the Budget Committee. They could've given us, you know, what the Budget Committee might want.
And that didn't happen.
Didn't get anything. So we put out what we thought we put together last year. We made it through the budget process. And we got a list.
Right, there were a bunch of stuff added last year when we got it kicked back. So we're best keeping the list.
So we keep the list and we'll...
We learn.
Make it better next year.
Steve?
I was gonna wait for car respondents, but Bonnie brought it up. I mean, she pretty much summed it up. But when I walked into the Budget Committee meeting on Saturday, that's when all this broke out. So I don't want the insinuation that I didn't report anything because I didn't hear about any of this until Saturday. So... And I was just... And it was requested of me, like I just said, but Bonnie pretty much summed it up that the Budget Committee is not happy. So...
Okay, thank you. All right, so you need a final vote on these numbers?
Yes, please.
Yes.
That's up to the board, but if you go into the Budget Committee, we'd agree upon that.
Well, aren't we a little sassy thing tonight, huh?
No, just...
All right, can I make a motion? Or you commit a motion? Somebody make a motion to approve this budget?
I'll make a motion to approve nine million, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
You still under old business, Chair? You have a chair?
Yeah, but I have another... If you wanna go first, that's fine, go.
I'm just curious about... We asked for information about a larger dumpster, a roll-off out there? Maybe any prices on something like that yet?
So you can do our homework on the dumpster issue?
I don't recall looking for a price.
Yeah, we can find out different costs.
For a larger roll-off?
It would be a roll-off that would allow larger items... I heard that large items don't fit into the dumpsters that we have. So there's roll-offs that separate beside one or the other one. And I would think you could replace one of the dumpsters with a larger roll-off. It'd probably be picked up less often and hold a lot more.
Bob?
But I believe we talked about not full-time.
When you have specific tasks?
We need to know how to do it.
Absolutely, but not full-time, weekly, weekly.
Right, no. I mean, if it was a larger topless roll-off, you don't... You're holding more. You pick up stuff.
Right, we need to make sure we have adequate space to put it, correct?
It's out there. I mean, we need to... We could probably make it up.
Mr. Adams?
The trash dumpster is the dumpster that some of those things that would be large on occasion would not fit in at those kind of... They're infrequent things. But the point I wanna make is on the trash, you gotta get that out of here. It would be horrible not to be in.
Yeah, that would be horrible.
Right. So I don't know what we're gonna do with those larger pieces. You know, we need to think about what those options are. Whether we collect them and we have some local contractor come in and dispose of those for us might be an option.
Bob?
When we have larger items that can't fit into the dumpster, we put them aside, off to the side. We call them for an extra dumpster to come in, a larger dumpster. Depending on what size we need, could be just a few large things that we don't need a full roll-off to be brought in and then call in for the extra pickup.
If you could look into those for us again, that would be great.
Yep.
What about Wakefield disposal? If you just had a few things to pick up, you'd be able to do that, right? Would that be cheaper than getting a roll-off?
I'm sure it'd probably be cheaper. There's probably other folks that volunteer and come in and haul it off for tons.
Okay, so you'll find that out for us, then?
Just... I'm just curious about the price comparison, what it would cost to have that larger roll-off compared to two of the current dumpsters.
We can look into Wakefield for it.
Wakefield disposal?
That's still a good question. So Ralph, you're saying you wanna take the two that we have and make it one?
If it's cost-effective.
But aren't they used for two different things?
Yeah. Which, I mean, if you're still putting the trash in the one container with the smaller container that gets unloaded every Monday or Friday, whenever they unload it, and then the cowboy and everything else, you know, the stuff that the varnments wouldn't get into, into the roll-off, I mean, you could make it work. It just takes a little while.
Go ahead.
So we have one for regular custodial trash. And then there's the recycle one, which is the cardboard. They refer to the one that would be able to put things that don't fit into the trash. As the roll-offs, it would be free, don't they?
No, the fact of the matter is whether it's recycled or not, it all winds up in one spot. It's definitely the same pile. So I mean, we do our best efforts here and make it to recycle and separate trash and stuff. But by the time it hits turnkey, it's in one big heap again. So if you're putting things that aren't food waste and aren't, you know, things that are harmful to people, like hanging around, cardboard, old books, old... It's two separate types of trash, I think. There's stuff that decomposes and stinks. And there's stuff that sits there and accumulates without the hazards.
Do we have a huge pile out there now?
I think so.
They can do a disposal.
So it's not like we don't look like the landfill backup? That's all I'm asking. Did you have something wrong?
I was still under old business, but I think you have something else wrong.
Right, I just have a question on budget, going back to budget. I know we asked Steve to represent the board to present our budget this year, but I'm not really comfortable having somebody present the budget who didn't even approve the budget. I mean, it just... That's just my opinion. I mean, if you're not gonna approve the budget, are you gonna present it?
So what, you wanna take my vote away?
No, I'm not taking your vote away. What I'm saying is you're presenting... You're sitting at the table presenting a budget that you don't even approve of. That's a little contradictory.
No, that's my right as a board member.
No, I'm not saying it's not your right as a board member. I'm saying that it just seems a little contradictory for you to sit there and present a budget that you didn't even approve. That's all I'm saying. I'm not taking away anything, Steve. I'm just saying that's my opinion, that I just find it a little odd that you wanna present a budget that you didn't even approve. That's all I'm saying.
I was picked by the board.
Right, I know. I understand that. So go ahead, Bob.
Is there certain issues, Steve, that stand out more than others? Is that how you look at that?
Can you tell us what those issues are?
You wanna sit here for another hour? I'll get my budget or books out.
No, that's okay. We don't need a complete dissertation.
I'm just trying to figure out how to go in for this, something that you disagree with. And I mean, I get you have the right to say you don't like the budget.
Breaking laws is, you know, a big, huge part of it with other people's money. You can't... I was just at the selectmen's meeting last week. The town administrator had to have... Couldn't do it. Had to have the selectmen move money from one line to another line so they could purchase a sander for the town garage. But here, we have the administrator, oh, I can do that, and doesn't even tell the board, just as in tonight. We got three hundred and... We got money that we don't even know where the line came from. There's another twenty-nine thousand dollars that went into the teacher's salary line. We were never told of. How are we supposed to be able to manage? Where the... The board has the fiduciary responsibility for the budget. And if you... And if we are not told where money is going from line to line because someone thinks they have the authority to adverbiage to the definition of purpose of the RSA, it's illegal what's being done. So I'm supposed to just say, oh, well, why do we even go through the budget? And the budget process, why don't we just do the bottom line? Nine million, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents? And the administrator can just spend it however he so chooses within a function. It defeats the whole budget process. We're responsible as elected officials to the people of Wakefield for nine million, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. And we can't be responsible if someone else is spending the money however they so choose. That's the biggest problem I have with the whole thing. It's against the law. And granted, there's three of you that approved it. But the penalty for doing that is removal from office. You can be removed from office for what you did. It's against the law.
All right, that's not what I was asking.
How do you figure it's not what you're... You asked what the law would have judged?
I said, I don't feel comfortable if you don't even approve the budget with you presenting the budget, Steve. That's all I said.
Well, then Bob asked.
Well, we went from line to line, the whole group of us, and we went through each one.
That's all I'm saying. I mean, can I make a motion to have a member that approved it represent it?
It'd be one of the same members that probably broke the law earlier, so...
Probably, but I'm just...
Enough, enough. We're not gonna have this discussion. We're not dissolving into this.
The fact of the matter is, other administrators won't break the law.
And I understand that.
And you three have approved it and allowed it. That's the fact.
And thank you for pointing that out. I'll sleep better knowing that. My point is, I would like to make a motion to have another member of the school board present our budget to the Budget Committee, one of which approved it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, does anybody wanna make a nomination for somebody to present the budget? You can. I would like for you to do it.
Okay, you know what?
I would like for you to do it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Guess we can stay home the next two days.
We're gonna put it in. We're gonna have to put it to vote. I nominate Bonnie Seer to present our budget to the Budget Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, I have one more thing. Mr. Gregoire, quick question for you.
The Halloween at the school, there's been some talk. There's been some talk. Why are we stopping the kids at third grade from dressing up and joining the festivities?
Just so they can head somewhere and say, have you ever run around building any festive goods?
Can we... I mean, I know some of the... A lot of the parents and kids were disappointed. I mean, it's not our decision. It's yours as staff. But I think that Halloween's an event. I think all of the kids should be able to partake in it. And again, it's not my decision. But in listening to some of the parents on the community forum, I'm sure you're aware of... You should check it out because you get some really good positive feedback on there. A lot of the parents were a little disappointed that we're cutting our kids off at third grade. Let them be kids a little bit longer. I mean, it's something... I don't work here. I don't manage all these children. But I just think that kids should be allowed to be kids a little bit longer. So if that's something you can...
We'll discuss it with the staff.
You.
Can I tell you back to where we did?
I mean, you know, some of the teachers dressed up. It was a great event, by the way. And if you...
And the, if you guys missed it, you weren't here, nobody was, I saw it. They did a little parade, and the kids were so adorable, and the teachers, the teachers all got involved, and they were dressed up as well. But then, you know, it was a great, it was a great day, but some of the parents were like, you know, we're stopping our kids at third grade, let them be kids. They still, these kids still trick or treat. So to go to the school, and we told them, no, you can't wear your costume. So I just wanted to bring that up as a, you know, that was a parent, that was parental feedback, so if you join the Wakefield Community Page, you'll be able to read it, and a lot of it, you know, they're not bashing people, they're just feedback. Yes, Ralph?
Old business, I'd like to discuss the chain of command. Seems there was an incident recently where a parent didn't want his child to share a recorder with classmates. So one chair of the school board decided to take it upon herself and call the school and issue an order for the vice principal to go down to the classroom and command that the recorders in that classroom were not to be shared with her granddaughter, because her son was a juvenile. How was that following the chain of command?
No, I called as a concerned, a concerned citizen, Mr. Vaughn, not as a school board member. You can ask the sup, the principal and the vice prin, you weren't here, the vice principal and the receptionist. I said, please find out if we are reusing these recorders, because my son does not want his daughters using used recorders. Got nothing to do with that. And then I was sent an email out to Mr. Greglar, who promptly responded and said, you can buy your own recorders, which is what I did. Had nothing to do with school board. It had to do with, I'm sorry, I don't want any kid using a used recorder, simple as that. No chain of command. I don't need to get permission to call this school to ask any questions like that.
Well, I, I would think as, as the chair of the school board, you would consider the fact that maybe that your, your child, parent of the grandchild, would go to the, either the music director or the student's teacher, that's usually the chain of command.
Right, but why would I pull? Why would I pull the music director out of his class? It was just as easy to call Nathan and say, hey, can you find that out?
Why would you do anything? Why wouldn't the parent do it?
Because I was asked to do it.
Okay, all right, so following the chain of command.
And as a parent, Ralph, I will, I will call this school and show up here anytime I want as a concerned citizen. There's nothing you can do about that.
I, I hope the voters do plenty about it.
And that's fine. But I guess it's better than coming in here and going into the basement when you're not supposed, you're not a school board member to check out our basement. You're also not supposed to be coming in through the kitchen. So, you know, come on. I called as a concerned citizen, so I don't know where you got your information, but they were wrong. Thank you.
And that, action was taken immediately upon the call.
Exactly, because I'm sorry, if you called and said your kid, you didn't want your kid on a dirty recorder, of course it was taken.
I see how it works, Mom.
Oh, oh, well, no. Oh, well. I didn't do it as a school board member. Whenever I call this school or come into this school, I get permission first. Mr. Tursi can testify to that.
Probably Mr. Tursi can testify to a lot of things. You guys might be testifying to a lot of things.
Whatever. Public comment?
Public comment? I never had to do a residency form, because my kids were out of school. But if you're having problems getting residency forms because parents have kids in two different places, could the residency form by any chance be changed so that if you have kids in two different places, you can list their names, and so just one thing covers two kids, one in high school, one at the elementary level? That way, I, I think it would prevent the problems that you're having, if that, if that can be done. And that might be something considered for next year.
Certainly something we can look at. Thank you. Priscilla?
I just wanna give my read on that list. I compiled that list during budget season last year, knowing that next year we want those things. I assumed that the SAU also kept that list, so I didn't send it to the SAU until we didn't get the things. And then I sent it to Nathan, that these are the things they had provided with us, to us, after we got the initial budget. So I just wanna clarify that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, make a motion to go into non-public session, percentage RSA 91A, semicolon, three, two, B, C. Nominations and classes. Can I be long? Second? All in favor?
Seer, aye.
Joy, aye.
Bob, aye.
Make a motion, no adjourners?
Well, I had a question. Well, last time you brought up something about digging test pits for White Mountain Survey. What is, did you wanna bring that to the board, or?
The, the test pits have all been dug and submitted to the White Mountain Survey.
Okay.
Right there. Free of charge, zero dollar. Digging through the taxpayers.
Did they solicit you for that?
Yes, they called.
Okay.
Actually, I had offered that service to all of the, all of the people providing bids. I think you were standing there. But the fact is, that I had offered those to anybody and everybody that's bidding on the project.
Not as a school board member, but as a taxpayer, right?
As a taxpayer.
Are we gonna get a discount back on White Mountain?
Not the business of the, I don't know.
The acting's too prescient, and you may always hit the janitor.
Make a motion for adjourn?
I would still like to volunteer.
All in favor?
Aye.